Good evening. I'll now call the City of Cannon Falls City Council Meeting for Tuesday, January the 21st to order. Roll call.
Councilmember Duncan?
Here.
Holst?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Madsen?
Here.
McCusker?
Yes.
Shobloom is absent, and Mayor Robinson.
Here. All please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome back to winter, I mean, oh, to the City Council Meeting. It is another chilly night out there, but we'll get through it. This time, the Chair will take a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
So moved.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Merle, and a second by Bill. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carius. Moves us on to Item 5 this evening on the agenda, which is public input. Citizens may speak. Items not on the agenda, before speaking, please give your name and address for the minutes. Please try to limit your comments to three minutes. Is there anyone wishing to address the council under public input this evening? Seeing as there is no one, we will move on to the consent agenda. Items on this area of the agenda may be adopted, or they may be removed, and placed on the business area of the agenda for discussion purposes before approving. For those at home, I will read the consent agenda to you. Item A is the just and correct claims for the accounting period ending December the 31st, 2013. Item B, just and correct claims for the accounting period ending January the 17th, 2014. Item C, the meeting minutes for January 7, 2013 City Council Meeting. Item D is the purchase of the dump truck and plow for Public Works. Item E is the authorized changes to bank signature cards. Item F, election of 2014 Fire Department Officers. Item G, Assistant Streets/Park Supervisor Position. And Item H, City Administrator Position/Offer. Are there any items anyone would like to bring down?
B, G, and H.
Okay, Item B will become Item 7C, which is the just and correct claims. G, you said?
B, G, and H.
Okay, and G will become Item 7D, which is the Assistant Street Park Supervisor. And Item H will become Item 7E, as a City Administrator. Any other items? With the exception of Items B, G, and H, the Chair will take a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted.
So moved.
I'll second.
A motion by Merle, a second by Bill. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carius. That moves us on to the council business this evening. We'll go to Item A, 7A, which is Merle Cost Assistance.
Representative from the Historical Society is here to give information to the City Council on this.
Good evening. Steve Dabla.
Steve, can you put the microphone towards you, please?
Yep.
Steve Dabla, representing the Cannon Falls Historical Society. Thank you for allowing me to come and address you today. What we're talking about right here, there's two items, I think, that I talked to Aaron Reeves about putting on the agenda, but we had a project this summer where we painted two murals, and we were successful in the completion of those, and had a very successful celebration with four different vintage bands that were part of the Norfield program, but we got them over here. I had done some math on here. The total cost, the money spent for that project was thirteen thousand four hundred and seventy dollars and twenty-six cents. We also had somewhere between two and twenty-five hundred dollars of in-kind services provided by different individuals. I do not have that in here. We were successful in writing a grant for nine thousand five hundred and ten dollars, and we had generous support. Three thousand four hundred and forty dollars was collected from individuals around the community to help with that. We had slipped a little bit over budget when we started including the community celebrations with the vintage bands, which was a happenstance that was very wonderful because Norfield had that program going on over there. So I've been out collecting some of the money. I probably raised about a thousand of that thirty-four hundred and forty dollars in just the last four, or five, or six weeks, but one day last summer, when I was doing some ground preparation below the mural, one of the councilmen drove by, Leroy, and...
Well, again, Dave.
What? Notice I looked the other way when I pointed. See, that's how you do that. But he had commented that if we got to a point where there was an overrun, not to be afraid to come before the city and just ask about that a little bit. And I had made a statement when we were getting the conditional use permit that this would not cost the city any money, and I really worked quite diligently towards that. But we find ourselves about five hundred and twenty dollars short, and I was having a conversation with Leroy one night on a few things, and so we thought it would be prudent for me to come before the council and see if you guys wanted to fund the final five hundred and twenty dollars.
Is it five twenty or six twenty?
What's it say on your screens?
Ours says six twenty.
Okay, it is six twenty, but I thought I told Aaron five twenty, so I was understating it tonight. It's six hundred and twenty dollars. Thank you. Six hundred and twenty dollars is what I'm looking for.
Who does this go to, Steve? Or is it paid out of your budget, or what's going on?
Pardon?
What, who does this go to, the six hundred and twenty dollars? I mean, is it just...
Yeah, we have a, we have a separate sub-budget for just the mural. And to give you a little bit of the cash history on the Historical Society, between the contribution that the city makes, I think it's around forty-five hundred dollars, something like that. You know, it had been larger, it got cut and stuff like that, and we've been making up the difference. But we have about a nine thousand dollar budget, and the salary takes about sixty percent of that, so we're a really skinny program. The ability to have gotten that nine thousand five hundred and ten dollar grant was a real blessing. So it's not going to be the end of the train ride if we don't get the six hundred and twenty dollars. It was just thought we'd come because it was being perceived with so much value, and there was some encouragement to do that. So we're trying to make each project, like the mural project, self-sufficient outside of the other budget, because we're having a hard time getting along on the nine thousand dollars that we are with Zach's salary, which is not much. And Ryan, who does a lot of work for us, and he gets paid not much either. So we're really efficient that way.
I would just like to make a few points, Robbie. I think their, the whole mural project is a great asset to the community. They are talking about doing another one, I believe, on the Brewster side of the building, possibly one down by the Econo Foods parking lot. I have gotten feedback where people have been to town and say they've seen them and really liked them. The Historical Society, I think we're kind of blessed that Steve has this kind of enthusiasm for this kind of stuff. We're also lucky in this artist that he's been working with is very reasonable. So I think we've been very fortunate in this whole project. I think it's also a community effort, and I think the city should make a contribution. And I would like to suggest that because of the other ones they're working on, and they're going to do on Brewsters and stuff, that we would even throw like twelve hundred or fifteen hundred dollars towards this to show that the council and the city is behind this, actually more so than the six hundred and twenty. So I guess I'd like to hear from other ones on that.
Well, I guess I would say, as far as the six twenty, I certainly have no problem with that, and starting to get in the habit of agreeing with Leroy, so I'm not sure if that's good or bad.
That's bad, right?
But, you know, I would have no problem, the city contributing six hundred and twenty. Now we can worry about future murals later, for my two cents.
Do we have a budget that this could come out of, the Parks Department?
We could take that out of the general miscellaneous. Yeah, there's money in there that could cover this amount.
We saved twenty-eight hundred here at last council meeting by not going computer on. So I'd rather use that money for this.
I do, I do have a motion on the floor then, from Leroy, to approve the six hundred and twenty dollars.
I'll second that.
And I have a motion by Merle. A second by, by Merle. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carius.
Thank you. On that agenda, was there anything, I know I talked to Aaron Reeves about it, and Leroy a little bit, we talked about some brass plaques. Is there anything on that at all?
Haven't heard anything. If we can get some type, I mean, you might want to look at getting some type of...
Don't need to go there. I was going to say that we're taking that, you know, off the table right now. Originally, there was a plan to put brass plaques on there, and they are expensive. And so we're working on a program to paint brass plaques on them, so it gives the story. So if that's not on there, I thank you very much. I appreciate your generosity and...
Well, Steve, I'd like to say thanks. The job that, on those murals, they're really nice. I mean, they stand out. I drive into town all the time, and you see the big one right there across the street from the Fire Department, and whenever you're pulling out of the parking lot at Econo Foods, you're seeing it, and I think they contribute well to the city. So thanks.
Thank you. I confess, I always detour around, so I can look at both of them every night when I come into town. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Okay. All right, that'll bring us up to Item 7B, which is the change in meeting date.
Yes, our next meeting should be February 4th. However, that is the night for the Minnesota caucuses, and by state law, we are not allowed to hold a public meeting after 6:00 PM. So we are requesting that we change the meeting date, and we would prefer the 6th of February, which is Thursday of that same week.
That works for me.
Yeah, 6 will be February 6.
Work for everybody else?
Yep.
6 o'clock.
Okay, got a motion to...
Should be fine with me.
Can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting change to the 6th of February.
I'll second.
A motion by Bill, a second by Merle, to move it to the 6th. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? First council meeting in February will be February the 6th at 6:30. Okay. Moves us on to Item 7C, which is adjusting correct claims from the accounting period ending January the 17th. Leroy had some questions?
Yeah. Lanell, nothing I need answers tonight, but I would like for you to get it on the list, is when Aaron was here, if there was one thing we differed a lot on, was this Black Mountain computer stuff. And I remember two years ago, when we hired our tech person, that some of this stuff was supposed to go down, or not be as much, or we're going to go some direction. And I remember telling Aaron that I seen a bill in there for eight thousand bucks or something, and I wanted to know why.
The invoicing from Black Mountain is for our software programs. They do our accounting, our assessments, our utility billing, our payroll, and our budgeting. So that really has nothing to do with our IT. It's totally separate. It runs all of the in-house bookkeeping and software programs, and that's an ongoing annual fee that we pay. We get upgrades to our software throughout the year for that fee, plus the support that they provide us whenever we have any questions or problems, or would like an improvement to, to the program.
Okay. Yeah, and he kind of gave me that same speech each time, but I kept asking him when we're going to find an alternative. And I see we got the bill in there again, and I apologize, because this is one of those weeks where I got time to read all his budget stuff, so...
That's okay.
It's hit me one more time, but thank you for that answer.
Sure.
The other one that was, that I wanted to ask you about is, in December, we, we had no ethanol purchased. I looked up all of our people that we, Ag Partners, I guess, that we do a lot of billing through for our fuel and all that. And all of a sudden, in January, December, we had no ethanol. In January, we had nineteen hundred bucks worth. And I do know that Ag Partners quit ethanol in September, October, or something. So I don't, I'm not saying there's something wrong, but it just seems a little weird. The other thing that I wanted to bring up to you when you're looking at that, I see service charges from Ag Partners for late fees, and I'm wondering if we aren't paying our bills on time, or what that's about. So you don't have to answer it tonight, but let me know on that. That was the two things that I, I came up with. Yeah, that's it for that.
Okay, any other questions, any concerns?
I'll make a motion to approve them, Robbie.
Okay. Got a motion by Leroy, a second, a second by Merle, to approve the just and correct claims for January the 17th, and Lanell will look into those two, to those concerns that Leroy has and get back to us. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carius. Okay. That's going to move us on to Item 7D, which is the Assistant Street Park, Street/Park Supervisor.
That one, I just, I guess, I don't know, did Aaron bring this up before he left? Is that what the deal is on this?
Yeah, Leroy, we've talked about it for a bit, and how are we going to transition into the, the potential loss of our street supervisor with retirement? And how do we transition from here to there? Do we get somebody on board now, or do we just go cold turkey when the day comes about? So, in talking to Aaron, he brought to the public, our hiring committee, we thought it'd be a good way to transition if somebody in-house, to try and groom them, so to speak, into that position. We do have two people that are interested in-house, and like I said, it would be my assumption that if that person worked out well in that role, that it would just be a transition right into the, a supervisory position upon the retirement of Mr. Pagel.
Is that, I guess what I'm wondering is, is I'm a fan of not changing things. I guess I'm, I understand what you're saying, but I also understand why we couldn't just make that transition in-house without it having to go this step.
We could, I guess, who are you going to take that, who are you going to take aside and say, this is the way we do things, or this is the way, this is why we do this? Who are you going to pick? Are you just going to pick everybody? I mean, we'd have to have some kind of a formula of how we're going to arrive, and who's the person with the torch get passed, passed down to, you know what I mean? In talking to Aaron, we thought this was kind of a seamless transition to kind of work in that direction.
So you're saying if you did this, that person would automatically transfer to Assistant Public Works Director, or Street Director?
No, there is no Assistant Public Works Director. It would be Street Supervisor.
Yeah, so they would, this person would transition like to what Dave is doing now?
Correct. And Leroy, this did come up, partially because, you know, Dave was down for a while with, with some issues, and we needed somebody to fill those shoes during that time, and we didn't have it, and we hope this would kind of bridge that gap, that we would have someone trained to step in when, when that came about, whether it's retirement or other reasons.
You don't have a problem with the union that way?
The unions, it's already been brought up to the union, and the union is all right with it.
Yeah, it'll, it'll be posted internally for the, for the union members to apply internally.
But then you say, this'll, this'll transition into the Street Supervisor. Is that going to be okay with the union? We won't have to post that again?
It may have, it'll probably have to be posted internally again for that position, I would imagine.
Merle, yeah, we would post that in-house again at that time, but that position would go away, then the Assistant, there would be no, there's going to be no outside hiring for this Assistant. My contention was, if nobody wanted the position, it goes away, and we deal with it upon the transition of Mr. Pagel. But, and the same with the Assistant position, if that person were to be, to go into that, which is the way we would assume that would go, but that's an assumption, you know.
We're not, we're not hiring any new people. We're just training.
I understand that. All I'm worried about is the union. I know how unions operate.
Right.
Or don't operate.
I can't speak for the union. My, my personal thought would be they'd be happy with it, because we're grooming somebody from within their union. We're giving somebody in their ranks a chance to move up, versus hiring somebody from the outside, two years down the road, or, you know, somewhere, somewhere like that.
This is an attrition, this is an attrition position, is basically what it is. So as, I mean, a lot of times, in a lot of places, people plan for attrition later on, to be able to move people to certain positions, because if you've got somebody that's already qualified to step into that, to, to come up into that position, then it's a lot easier to fill that position with somebody qualified that already knows what's happening in the, in the city, what's happening with everything that we're doing. So, I mean, it's, it's something that is a good thing in the long run, so that you don't go backwards. You're going forwards. I mean, we never know from one day to the next if we're going to be here or not, and if you don't have somebody that knows what's going on, and all of a sudden that person has to come out and try to fill a position, you know, you're starting from ground zero again. And it takes a lot of times, time to go back and have to retrain that person, and if we got somebody that can step in and start learning what that supervisor does, it's a good thing.
I guess I understood all of that, Robbie. I really did. I was just asking if the union was on board with this.
Yep. And it's per the, it's per the, it's per the 49ers Union Agreement that is posted internally.
And my hope, Merle, is it would take some pressure off Mr. Pagel. I don't think any of us begin to realize the phone calls, and the getting up at 2:00 AM and looking out the window. I've did 25 years that I know. It's, it's a miserable life to set your alarm every two hours, to get up, look out the window, try to go back to sleep and worry. So my hope is it would take some pressure off of Dave, especially in these winter months where he could maybe take a week's rest, you know, where somebody else will kind of ease into the position, and know when to make the call, when not to make the call, because no matter how you make the call, it's wrong. So I just want to try and groom somebody into that position.
I was just asking about the union.
Yep. Okay, I'll dress that to Bill then. Bill, I'm dressing that to you then.
Well, the thing is, is that I'm all for whatever we can do to help Dave, because that guy has gone beyond the duty for, I don't know how many years for this city. The one thing is, we have all these policies, and Aaron was a real policy person. And I guess, if that's what it has to be, it has to be, but I'm more of a person that if somebody's gone, or somebody's sick, or somebody needs help, you just pitch in. You don't need a title to do it. And, and I guess I'm from the old school where I really don't like change. I don't like to, we change our meetings to Tuesday nights, and change somehow always comes back to bite us, for some reason. I don't understand it. So I'm reluctant to do it, but on the other hand, whatever helps David out, I am all for that, because the guy is basically too committed to this city. So I doubt if we do appoint somebody that he'll even let him help out. He's that type of person. But I guess, I would rather not do it till it's discussed more, maybe the union thing is addressed more, but I'm open either way.
Well, do we have a motion?
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the Assistant Street/Park Supervisor position as presented.
As long as it's okay with the union.
Yeah, as per the 49ers Union Agreement.
I'll second then.
A second by Merle? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Ayes have it. All right, that brings us to Item 7E, the City Administrator Position.
Oh, boy, I hate this one.
Who is this guy? We don't know him. I haven't heard a word about him until I got this agenda. We haven't met him. I don't know how he's been vetted. I don't know where he's from. How can I endorse him? How can I approve him?
Okay, we, just so people know what we're talking about here, Personnel Committee was charged with the process of interviewing candidates for our City Administrator Position. We had quite a few candidates that applied. We found five good, strong candidates that we brought in for interviews. The interview committee consisted of myself, Bill, Lanell, and Greg Wolf, from First Farmers and Merchant Banks. So we put together a strong committee to go through and, and interview these folks. After we interviewed the first round, we brought them all back. We brought the two that we felt were the best fit for Cannon Falls in for a second interview.
How many did you do the first round of?
We did five. After that, after the second round, we decided on Ron Johnson, who is currently the City Administrator for Lake City. He was, Ron brings over 25 years' worth of administrator experience to the table. He was 15 years in Zombreta. He's been down in Lake City for over nine years now.
Why is he looking to change?
He's looking for a change to, because he likes working with small towns. He knows what we've got going on as far as growth, potential in the future. He's been in the county for a long time. He'll only have to deal with one city and one county, not one city and two counties, because as Lake City Administrator, you have to deal with not only Good Hugh County, but you have to deal with Wabashaw County. So he's looking to, to make a change. He...
Where's he live?
Yeah, he actually lives in Red Wing. So he's a lot closer than, than Aaron was. We, with the background checks and things that are, we got the background checks going on, the, one of our committee members spoke with some other folks in the community who, and asked about him, and they said, absolutely. You know, he's very well, easy to work with. He is a good person, and they, they recommended hiring him also.
And why weren't we given any information on this guy before we got this? Why weren't we given...
Well, we followed the same procedure that we did when, when Aaron went through this process, where we had a...
Wasn't here, and maybe it was wrong then, too.
Maybe. I think it worked out well with Aaron, but, but it was the same process where we interviewed... But it was the same process where we interviewed a number, got down to a couple of finalists, did a second interview and the committee recommended to the council.
And then you expect us to just endorse this?
The only thing maybe we should have done is maybe shown you guys his resume.
That would have helped.
That would have been probably the only thing I would really change.
That would have helped because I don't know anything about this guy.
I got a few things I'd like to say, Robbie, and then I'd like Merle and others to speak up again. The one thing that, when Aaron told me that he was gonna be leaving and stuff, met with him several times about that. Then I talked to Aaron about what's gonna be the direction now for his replacement and stuff. And he said, well, we're gonna run, run an ad for the opening and see what kind of response we're gonna get. He said, I assume there will be a lot of responses and we'll narrow it down to 10, 12 people and then get the council together and we'll decide which ones are the best choices out of that and then go back to an interview and inform the council and then we'll vote on it. And I said, well, I would really like to be involved in the process. But I said, I'd just soon get involved when you get it down to 10 people. And he said, yeah, we'll notify you that and that's just automatically the way it's gonna be anyway. He said, all the council members are gonna be involved. So that's what I was informed and then the next thing I know, we're voting on someone. So I wanted to talk to Lanell today and to get some information more on this person. And that didn't work out to no fault of our own, it's just timing. But I really, I really didn't like the process. I, when I read all the rules and the regulations and the wages and all that stuff, I actually was hoping out of almost 50 people that somehow there had to be some young, new fireblood in there that might want to move to our town and might want to stay in our town versus going with these people that are going up the ladder all the time. I also know that Aaron, Aaron was a good administrator, but he was a delegator. I never quite liked that about Aaron because he wasn't really a hands-on person. But I also do know that Aaron did a great job of delegating and left us with a heck of a team here. That the city is just gonna keep right on going because everybody's got their jobs and know what it is. And Aaron was a delegator. So on one hand, I'm more of a hands-on person myself, but I also knew he did a good job of letting everybody know where they're supposed to be. So I didn't see the hurri-ness in this, I didn't see that it was some kind of a crisis that we had to do something right away. And I was actually waiting to hear that, I was gonna get some emails, reports that we were down to 5, 10 people and these were the best candidates. I also worked in Lake City three years ago down there for quite a few months and was told by somebody that lives down there all their council problems they had at that time. And I guess I was kind of curious to see the resume and where this person was from, to see if he was involved in that and why there was such turmoil in their council and stuff and why it wasn't getting resolved. So that's kind of circumstances that happened that way. I also had somebody else tell me that we have somebody from, that's Assistant Director in Inver Grove or Cottage Grove or something that lives in town here. And FEMA that applied for it. And I was kind of wondering why we didn't hear from that. I was kind of wondering why we seemed to pick probably the most expensive person. And through the whole process, if we were to have a council meeting, one of the top things would have been on my list to bring up that I really felt we had the person in-house that we should have transferred up, and that was Mr. Maroney. I felt it would have been easier to fill the EDA market with a young fireball and Dave would have all the experience to keep an eye on him and still do the administration job. And Dave was reluctant to sign up for that because he didn't want to cause any conflict in City Hall and stuff. But these are the discussions I would have had if we'd have had some kind of committee or the whole council working on this. So I'm reluctant to jump into this right away and I don't know why we have to. I think the city is gonna go along just fine. And thanks to Lanell that's been through this three, four times and always bails us out and keeps things going. I don't, there's an awful lot of benefits in his contract and not maybe that he don't deserve them. But I, I'm not necessarily trying to replace Aaron. I'm trying to replace him with a new Aaron and new ideas. And I think there's options out there and I don't think they were explored. So I'd like to hear from others.
I thought too that Aaron had said that the full council would be involved at one point, maybe with the last two or three of them. But I really feel that I should have had more information on this gentleman before you asked for my vote to hire him. I really do. And I think I would like to at least meet him if you want me to hire him. So I make a motion that we table this until you can bring him here so that we can meet him. And maybe bring the next candidate into, the next one you had in line. I think I'd like to meet that one too.
I don't think we can do that. I think we could bring in Mr. Johnson.
So you've already made an offer?
We've made an offer pending background investigation and approval by the council. Those are the two things that have to be done. And I'm not sure where the background information or investigation is at this point, probably finished sometime yet this week.
And why is the rush? Why do we feel there's such a rush to get this done? We got so many talented people, we got Justin in the library, we got Tom in Public Works, Jeff in the Police Department. Everybody knows their job. We got gals down in this office that just automatically know where everything is going.
I'm gonna play a little thing here. Do you want us to just do away with all our committees then and just have the council meet and handle every detail that we do on the job?
No, but you know, when we do public works, we decide at the committee and then we bring it to the council and discuss it. The full council decides on it then.
Right, after you've gone through all the different things and you bring your final thing forward for them to approve.
But we give them background information when we do that. We tell them this is what's gonna happen, this is the pool. We brought all that.
Personnel issues are a little bit different than others.
Okay, but we should at least know who this guy is before we're asked to hire him.
That's why I'm asking, should we eliminate committees so every time we hire somebody, we should bring them before the council?
Oh, you know, that's ridiculous, Bill.
Well, no, but-
We're talking-
No, Bill, you're talking the main job.
All we want to do is know the four, five options. Instead of just coming down to one tonight and this is it and it's an extremely well-paggered deal. There's nothing about bringing a younger person in here at 75, 80,000 and we can give them raises. It's also in that package that every January 1st, this person gets considered for raises automatically. So I, I'm not saying this isn't the right person or whatever. But I didn't, I didn't get any emails, any options. I didn't get anything that said, you know, there's four of them that are really good and two of them I think would be perfect. But if I had to pick one out of the two, it'd be this, it's just bang, here it is. And I don't know why it isn't important for the council to be involved in this big a decision.
Would you like him to come in at our next council meeting so you guys can speak with him and question?
Well, quite frankly, I don't know what to do now outside of put it on hold. That would be my recommendation till, till, where do we go from here? I guess do we go back and look at the other ones and reconsider this or are we just strictly in that role? Or can I stick my neck out here tonight and ask Dave if he would take it? And if he turns me down flat, then I know I got a no answer there. And I was wondering if Dave was considered.
Legally, we posted the job like it has to be done through Human Resources. It went out. Everyone that had the opportunity to apply, applied. There was a cutoff date. The job was posted for three weeks, I think, two to three weeks. There were, I think, how many? Fifty people that applied. We worked through Aaron to weed it down, to find the folks that we felt would be the best candidates, the best fit to try, or to interview for the city of Cannon Falls. And one of the things we were looking at is, okay, with everything we've got going forward in the next couple of years, do we want somebody that, we've got to train? Or do we want somebody that knows the county, that knows the contacts? Somebody that's gonna be able to hit the ground running to keep us moving forward? I mean, I know we've got a lot of good people here, but you know, sometimes you need that one leader that's ready to step up and hit the ground running. And that's what we saw in Mr. Johnson and that's the reason that we did go forward with the offer when we did it. And, you know, I just think that he is very qualified to help us move and continue to move in the direction that we're heading.
And I guess I would like to at least meet him before I can say, yes, he is the best candidate. That's what I'm saying. I don't know anything about this guy, nothing except his name and the contract that you offered him.
So you're asking that maybe our next meeting on the 6th, that you'd ask him to come in and you guys could-
At least say hi.
Well, I think we could even have it before the meeting. You can have an open meeting, I'm fine with that. But you could have him come in earlier too, just to greet him and stuff. But I would also like to point out to Aaron's credit with Aaron's-
It has to be, it has to be at a meeting.
Has to be at a regular meeting, yeah.
But to Aaron's credit now, with his delegation stuff, the one thing that him and I had a lot of talks about before he left was I told him with all of our stuff going with MINDOT and different things, whether it's public work or police or the city stuff, I said, you make sure that Lanell has filled in on what your thoughts are, what you've been dealing with and you make sure that Dave has filled in on all this MINDOT stuff so that we don't miss a beat on this stuff while we're in transition here. And Aaron assured me, and I'm sure that that happened, and I know that Dave knows all about the MINDOT stuff and has been brought up to date on that. But I tell you, I just, I feel that comfortable with our staff that if this didn't happen tonight, we're gonna be just fine. Because these people did all get filled in by Aaron and where we're headed and stuff. So I feel a little bit like, I wish this could have been shared ahead of time so it didn't have to come to this point. There was some misinformation there from what Aaron filled me in on the direction this was gonna go. And then it was partially my fault, I could have contacted Robbie and said I wanted to be more involved or what's the process gonna be. So there's some blame on my part too when I talked about Aaron with his training process with me. Hello? This is what I'm talking about. But I really don't feel comfortable in voting on this tonight. And I don't know what direction to go, but I don't feel comfortable tonight.
I guess I'd like to make a motion that we bring him in for the next meeting so that we-
Yep.
I'll second my motion.
I have a motion on the floor to table this offer until such time as Mr. Johnson can come in, meet the full council and then we, then we vote from there.
Well, that would be our next meeting.
Right, on our next meeting, on the 6th of February.
You'd be able to contact Ron and let him-
And I was wondering if Morris or Jay or any of them got any comment? Is this just Merle and I that feel this way or somebody else thinking along these lines or?
I got a couple of questions on the contract too, like on the Section 10 there. Is that pretty common for an administrator? You get that six months severance?
Yeah, Aaron had that.
Alright.
The total compensation on this contract is actually less than what Aaron was getting.
The contract that is followed is the basic contract that's supplied by the Minnesota Cities, so it's a standard contract.
So it's pretty standard for a person to get vehicle allowance and gas mileage allowance and all this? I mean, I'm sure everybody out there working would like to have that in on their contract.
But that was also included in Aaron's contract.
Yeah, but I don't always think that makes it right. I would rather have a young guy in here that's doing a great job and is threatening to move and I could offer him mileage and stuff to keep him, you know? So I don't know. Thank you guys for the-
My thing was, again, and I mentioned to Robbie and we talked now, because it is the main job. It would have been nice and what I did because of super tendents and stuff like that, the board was always involved. I mean, you'd get it down and you'd have a meet the candidate type of deal and that, so. But then after talking to him, I felt a little bit easier because he answered my questions about the man, you know, and different things that he said. So I can go either way, but I just think it would have been nice, that's all.
I have a motion on the floor to wait till next time, or do we have a second?
I'll second.
And I have a second by Rod? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we will bring in Mr. Johnson on the 6th of February to meet and make a decision at that time.
Also, if, prior to that, if we could make his resume available to the council members who were not involved? If that's, is that okay to do? Okay.
At least give us the basic qualifications, other than his name.
So can I get a definite no tonight, Dave?
At this point, we'll move on to reports. Brenda? Tom?
I have nothing.
Greg?
We had a cool open house meeting here before the regular council meeting, had most of the chairs filled up. We do have another one before the second meeting in February, which will be the 18th at 5:30. And then again, the vote is on the 3rd of March.
Speaking of MINDOT, a question for the Public Works Commission members. The council's gonna move to February 6th. We are looking for MINDOT and some other issues coming up with Public Works Commission about what day that you prefer to meet.
Well, can we still meet on the Tuesday because that's prior to 6 o'clock?
Keep the regular meeting?
Yeah. Right, right, and it will because we meet at 1 o'clock. Yeah, we'll just have Afton send out the agenda.
And we'll plan on that and we've got-
I guess you would have to send it out, Tom, wouldn't you?
Yeah, that's what we planned on, you know, that's works for you guys.
Normally, Afton puts it together, but I understand that, you know, she's about to have a child. She may not be available, may or may not put it together, so.
Yeah, I say whatever works for you guys, works for us. Yeah, I say, whatever works for you guys, works for us.
Let's just assume we will meet at our normal time?
Hell, that's fine with me.
It works, okay.
Is that for the right turn lanes, Dave?
Yeah, as a follow-up, I know Aaron communicated with all the members of the council after last Wednesday's meeting that we had with the Ombudsman staff from, from MINDOT. And been talking with, with Greg again to, to kind of follow up on, on the direction that we're heading as a result of the, the conversations with MINDOT. So we should have by the fourth, uh, more information to share on the access issues as well as several other projects that we need to have some discussion with the commission on. Thank you.
Chief?
Well, mine's not as thrilling as MINDOT. Just a reminder to, uh, our residents that, uh, we've had some snowfall. With that comes snow removal, um, and potentially tickets or toes. Uh, we don't really want to end up having to ticket or tow anybody, so please, when it snows, uh, make sure that your vehicles are off the, uh, off the roadways or parked in the designated permitted parking area. Makes it a lot easier for Public Works and, uh, it saves me from getting a whole bunch of phone calls the next morning. That's all I got.
Merle? Nothing. I have nothing.
Leroy?
Um, I just, I just wanted to personally thank Lanell, uh, for working through this process again. You've been such a trooper so many times with this kind of stuff. And I'm always grateful that we have this talent that just keeps everything going along. I would also like to, uh, thank all the staff members, uh, wow. If there's one thing that Aaron was good at, was delegating and letting everybody know how he wanted to run, and they took care of it for him. So it's really a great thing. The other thing I just wanted to highlight on for the council that if they aren't completely familiar with, uh, the MINDOT right turnoff lanes, uh, I didn't think that thing was going to go anyplace, and we, I had a bunch of people get ahold of me about three months ago. Because of Aaron and because of Dave and because of Matt Schmidt and Mr. Kelly, we had meetings, uh, it got presented. Didn't hear anything for a while, and then we get a little good news, and then we went and hear anything for a while. But there's actually a ray of hope in this thing to get them right-hand turn lanes. So I just really want to thank our staff and for doing their homework on that again. That's it.
Jay?
Nothing.
I attended the pool meeting before here too. I was just listening to what the people were saying. Is there, I don't know what, I know we, we're going to have another meeting and that, but we've got to get, I know they're going to have, what, to get, um, the yes group or something like that together or something like that, but I think a lot of people are still in the dark and different things. We, we got to get over that some way. But, I mean, which is.
Evidently.
They'll work it out.
There, there was some confusion on the Beacon article where they talk about, um, maybe they didn't use the right words. We got to get the, the word out, Ken. That, uh, when they talk about, making a profit or, or breaking even, that is strictly on the operational side. You will still have the debt service if you vote for this, if the people vote for this project. We're just, their estimates are that we would make money with the newer pool. I personally think, uh, as one, uh, person commented, that if we break even operationally, that would be a great thing rather than losing fifty or sixty thousand, which we currently do. But we got to make it clear that it's, they're talking about the operational aspect, not the debt service.
That's all I got.
And I don't have anything else for, uh, for tonight, and, uh, at this point, we will adjourn.
I'll move.
I'll move.